Start with question Lee.
Question Lee, this is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Theresa, we take the roll call.
Okay, Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Monday many are announced I would notice.
Do I have a motion to approve or any additions to the agenda? Motion to approve.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the six fifteen and six twenty eight meetings?
Motion to approve minutes from six fifteen and six twenty eight twenty twenty-one meetings.
Sir.
Any discussion? Not on the phone? Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yep.
And I'm a yes. No bills? Amazing. Uh, any public input on items not on the agenda? Mr. Chris.
Yes, Chris, to you from public ring. Something just to share some thoughts with you all on Jamboree Days. I'll, uh, I just sent a letter to, or an email to Leah, ask her for just to maybe just kind of our thoughts around some of the changes that took place this year, so like to read it if that's okay?
Yep.
So Leah, we'd like to start this letter with an acknowledgement of all the hard work and planning that the Jamboree Committee does puts into the week every year. It's a very nice series of events that provides lots of enjoyment to many people. As business owners and community volunteers, we fully appreciate the commitment it takes to continue putting something like this together. We're writing this letter to express our serious disappointment at the decision to leave the street gangs away from all the business activity into a residential area. Three and a half years ago when we were planning our business considering numerous location options, our downtown location was only one possibility. We were given the opportunity to be a starting point for a downtown revitalization. We knew it would be a risk as well as a lot of, as we weighed the options, after traffic toll was a significant consideration as at that time downtown was pretty much dead. As an individual, Chris grew up in town and at the time, at that time, Jamboree Days was almost entirely downtown. There were steady numbers of people in the central business district all weekend. Knowing that we would have to work pretty hard for our business traffic, having weekends of Jamboree and hometown Christmas with company in the sense that they would bring more natural traffic flow and realization of what is happening downtown to broader community. We moved back to town and realized that all the events, with the exception of the street gangs, part of the freight route to relocate was quite a disappointment. At first summer, Chris discussed the potential of locating the car shows in the future with a couple of different committee members and repeatedly told me all it was in parks about our location. We may inquire about setting up a vendor booth or inform the Jamboree Committee has monopoly on alcohol sales. That is the biggest fundraiser the committee has. In addition to operating a business, we're active in community volunteering, especially as it concerns downtown. My wife, Callie, is VP of Downtown R-Prading, a group similarly dedicated individuals who work hard to bring events recognition and improvements to the downtown area. As you're likely aware, they have commissioned a nearly fifteen thousand dollar master plan by SG, group set up collective feedback at the downtown. This money was raised through completely private means, leaving the taxpayer in a way alone. As this group and others in the community continue their efforts, having the progress seen by a larger number of people more often will almost start to accelerate about revitalization efforts, locating a single busy speaking in town nearly completely away from the downtown, the area is a detriment to the sector. There are currently three downtown businesses that have a large majority of their retail sales subject to the food penny tax. The fund that we understand, the funds that we understand are drawn from to provide the Jamboree Days budget. In the past, these businesses were at the very least allowed to compete with the business of all the people living at draws. As of this year, they're not even allowed to compete. These businesses are instead expected to compete to even bring traffic, bring this traffic to the central business district that are competing with something they have largely funded. For prospective business owners and investors looking to potentially bring something new to downtown, this is likely to be a consideration, at least the most for us. If the revitalization of downtown is going to gain serious momentum, which will absolutely require substantial private investment, everyone in town needs to be on the same team and playing the same game. Businesses such as ours, restaurants and other retail offices don't typically look at an area like the current downtown and see an easy road to success. They often choose places more like Phillips Avenue for its newly year-round high level of natural traffic. Small town businesses often struggle for these exact same reasons, making it all the more important to provide opportunities for substantially incidental traffic whenever possible. This community has struggled to keep businesses afloat for years, while there are likely multiple reasons for this is not making investing anymore attractive. We ask you consider, reconsider next year's event locations and bring this event more into line with how other small communities execute their annual festivals on the main streets or in the main street business community. We've never been approached about helping any sort of fundraising, but feel it should be pretty clear that is something we've had quite a lot of success at. We want to plan something that mutually be, be mutually beneficial to the Jamboree Committee as well as our area town. Maybe a large joint bingo, well advertised and great grand cries with help of a substantial amount of funds. Please share your concerns with the committee. Sincerely, Chris and Callie, to you from public ring.
Thank you. And you have sent that or?
Yes, I have. It was sent on June 1st.
Alright. Have you heard anything back from Leah?
Just that it was forwarded to the committee.
Okay.
It's still in the meeting room that I guess it's taken.
Well, our only piece of this is when they come to talk to us about, about funds, so it'd probably be good if you could give a copy of that letter so we at least have it, so.
Okay.
Could use that. Yeah. You can scan that or whatever and send it out to us so at least we have it in our, in our archives. That, I mean, that's really our only, that's our time when we have discussion with them.
No, I realize there may be nothing constantly directly in respect, maybe someone to share about last.
No, that's.
Oh, yeah, appreciate it.
Absolutely, that's.
We feel it's critical, so.
Yeah.
Really important, so.
No.
Thank you. There aren't really many questions, we need to go, that's it. Thank you.
No? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Alright, anybody else? If not, we're gonna move on to the visitors. Mark Winter, requesting a Legion-sized baseball field in Hartford.
Yes. We were approached that, uh, there are people that would like to have a baseball team in Hartford and right now there is not a field that's sufficient size. Without it swings and park, in the original drawings and even in the updated drawings, there's room out there for a Legion-sized baseball field, which is ninety-foot baseball baseline. And right now, there is money in the Sports and Rec Fund to cover what it would take to put the fence up out there, so would like to see if they, you know, if the council would approve that, that money be expended for that. Get fences put up, get two baseball fields out there, and they could be set up as multi-purpose so that could have a moveable mound for the younger ones so they can be closer. But as long as we got the max distance then, we can serve all of the, uh, teams that are out there. Right now, there is talk that, you know, they have a team there in Humboldt. Humboldt is supporting a senior team. Right now, there is nobody supporting a junior team. Unfortunately, they've been left out.
When you say junior team, you're talking like teenager age? Is that what it's called?
Okay, a senior team is nineteen and eighteen.
Okay.
Okay, anybody who has not turned nineteen by first of Jan- January is eligible to play on the senior team. Which would be your seniors not from high school. Okay, they can draw if necessary from the younger people than that, but it would cover like nineteen, eighteen, seventeen-year-olds. Now, junior team would be drawing from eighteen, seventeen, sixteen. So right now, there is nobody that's servicing those seventeen, sixteen-year-olds. And, but they need the same size baseball field, ninety-foot bases. So, you know, if you got a, uh, field for the junior, it's also gonna work for the senior. And the other thing is, it also depends on the numbers. Now, if there are at least thirty kids that can play on the senior team, max that they can have on a team is eighteen. So even saying you got thirty people, that's enough for two teams of fifteen each. Now, and then if you look at junior teams, you do the same thing there. Now, there's room for potentially four teams. Right now, they're doing one. But if they get two baseball fields put up up there, we can, you know, we're looking at sponsoring at least a junior team. And if there's sufficient numbers, we might be looking at a senior team as well. This is gonna be brought up at our next meeting, which is the first week of August. And right now, the board's, or the committee's recommendation is to sponsor a baseball team. So now we need a field. And being that the ground and everything is prepared up there, all it needs is to have the fence put up, then the infield laid out, and from one estimate, it can be done for right, just under two hundred thousand dollars. So with that two hundred thousand that's in the Sports and Rec Fund, that would cover that. And if there is a shortage, we can fundraise and get the rest of it pulled together.
Well, your timing is probably pretty good. We're down further in our agenda tonight. We're talking about the creation of our Park and Rec Board that we've just approved here a couple of meetings ago. Okay. And this is probably gonna be a great first, uh, project, if you will, for them to vet and see what they're gonna do, talk with the, because there's gonna be people from Sports and Rec Committee and other members from town talking about this. I, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but just saying, let's put a fence up and get a ball field going and spend the two hundred thousand. These guys got plenty of uses for their two hundred thousand. Where's BJ? Is he still here? Yeah. They got plenty of uses for their two hundred thousand. I think probably five or six groups could spend that if we let them. So, uh, I think we're gonna probably have to have more discussion. Anybody else got any?
Now, you, as you said, if you're forming a new Parks and Recreation Committee.
Yes.
Have you already picked the members for that?
No, we have not.
Okay. The Legion would be interested in having one of those positions.
Alright, we'll take that, because tonight, we're, that's one of the things we're gonna talk about tonight. I think it says, discuss possible members. Yep. It's on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
So your timing was great. When I met with Theresa this afternoon to go over the agenda, that's what we discussed. This might be the, uh, really great first project.
Yeah, I realized according to what the new ordinance said, that the budget had to be in by one July. Unfortunately, that's passed.
Who's budget?
The Parks and Rec Committee. For twenty twenty-two, and that's next year.
The ordinance is looking forward. We want it by July first for nature. We haven't had our budget meeting this year. It'll be here in August.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at what the paperwork says. I can't do anything beyond that.
Yeah, but going forward, the ordinance, we want it by July first. We have time to compile the budget.
Okay.
That's with all committees.
Yeah, that's with all committees, exactly.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, what is the, it's, so Humboldt does not want to support this, is what you're saying?
No, it's not that Humboldt does not want to support this. Right now, they are, the Humboldt Legion is supporting a senior team.
Okay.
There is nobody supporting a junior team.
Okay.
And the Humboldt field can't have both the junior and senior team playing on them?
If there's too many people playing, they cannot do that. Right now, there is a shortage of ball fields. And I'm not sure that the Humboldt one is regulation size. I got a feeling it might be a little short. Which means, I'm not sure how the rules extend in that direction then. I'm willing this as I go.
Right.
Alright.
No, we have that opportunity to build a new field. We have the opportunity to get the length line out there. It's not gonna cost any extra at that point. And, you know, if there's a problem with putting the fence up and such, you know, there are other options out there as far as, you know, who can, uh, put up, put the location and everything out. Do you have any other questions?
Nope, I don't. Anybody else got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Put you on the list. Alright, uh, Vlad?
Alright.
Requesting ordinance change to allow chickens in the city limits.
Yes, I was gonna say baseball and brewery are a good company. Let's see, alright, uh, ladies, gentlemen, I'm Vlad Scott from one oh seven Vandemark, one of the old and silver Jamboree route. I'm representing Hartford citizens in favor for ordinance change to allow backyard chickens that is currently not allowed. Uh, so currently, city ordinance classified chickens or galliforms as scientific name as livestock and they're prohibited. So speaking of members of our group, which we have about sixty people on our Facebook group, and we have other people that actually, we had meetings that to show up that weren't part of that. Uh, we were kinda discussing about the history of why that is and kind of what happened. And, uh, basically, a long time ago, or not so long ago, there was no prohibition on having chickens or really any of the livestock. And some citizens or members of the community kind of took advantage of that. And so they abused the privilege resulting in like loose animals, substandard animal welfare, noise, smell, unkept and unsafe property with no regard for their neighbors. Uh, and we, residents of Hartford and the members of our group, completely agree with the city council's decision to prevent that from happening in the future. Uh, unfortunately, the measure went so far as to prevent responsible hobby farmers like us from keeping clean, quiet, contained and overall loved and cared for chickens. Uh, so as neighborhood municipalities like Brandon, uh, Brookings and Sioux Falls have successfully adopted proposals like ours, we think that Hartford should adopt reasonable measures to allow up to six hens. That's no roosters, just hens, make much less noise than dogs. So, uh, the sixty members of our group, as well as those who have shown us support, would love to grow our community and enrich the opportunities through this fun, healthy and sustainable agricultural connection. Uh, the handouts that I'm sure you've had, I've emailed them. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at them. So they're, uh, what we consider the proposal, so we've kinda tried to do your homework for you in case you don't wanna do it. And then also some frequently asked questions that we kinda wanted to get ahead of before, if we, we're gonna discuss those later. Uh, so, and then we're creating with a lot of community contribution. We talked to other people in the community and extended community of members at Brandon and Sioux Falls as well. From the Dakota Rural Action and improve the group, they address the most common objections. Uh, but I also hope that this highlights how our extended community has invested interest in ensuring that backyard chickens don't get a bad rap. Essentially, so that if we see neighbors that are kind of abusing the privilege of having it, then we would kindly talk to them and maybe help them out and say, chickens are not doing well, then we, our community of experts appear to help each other. Because we don't want this to become a burden on the city to have to enforce it, to have to use any resources to have to enforce it. We kinda wanna be a self policing community with this, because if somebody takes advantage of it and abuses it, then we all lose a chance to do it responsibly. So, um, so the proposal creates a, what we did right here is we created parameters to ensure that we can trust our neighbors to keep chickens without repeating the conditions that led to their ban. With these limits, problems with noise, smell, predators, and community well-being will be marginalized. As far as welfare of the chickens, uh, we have, uh, in the audience, Stephanie Peterson, uh, from Fruit of the Group. She has offered to give free intro to chicken care classes, uh, here in Hartford, uh, when we request, obviously not anything that would prevent her from enjoying the experience, but I'd say if we garner enough, uh, support through our channels, whether it be through our Facebook group, or just community members hanging out at, uh, the brewery discussing things with us, uh, then we can organize a class and people who like the idea but don't really know what they're doing, they can not only have introduction into how to do it, but they will actually be introduced through the wider Hartford community of responsible caretakers that will help them in their journey as they develop their, uh, their craft, their hobby, their ability to do this the right way and possibly help people in the future. So, uh, and also if somebody gets to the point where, uh, people are concerned with the chickens, welfare is not being well taken care of, we have, uh, met with other members that have chickens outside of city limits that are willing to rehouse them, or people, part of the extended community can help take care of them. And I've looked at different communities on Craigslist, and even if you put up or even Facebook Marketplace or something, uh, chickens need a home, uh, a lot of people responded greatly, but take those. So that would be another way that we ensure that the enforcement part of the city doesn't really have to be taxed in order to make sure that this is happening the right way. So, um, and they can get a hold of us through our Facebook group or we'll make our information available so that we can get ahead of it. So, as a Hartford resident, I want to have more enriching opportunities and time with my kids and see that move a feather and easily play on the field later if he's our baseball fan. And then it's Kelly back there, she's an original member of the group, and she really wants to make sure this happens. Uh, I think, uh, I think it would be need to exchange garden vegetables for eggs, all grown by my neighbors. Uh, we see the chickens, the six chickens, as essentially like having a garden near backyard. It's kind of a, like a combination of pets and a garden, but, you know, you could leave them outside and have fun with them. They're super hardy too. The people in Sioux Falls and Brandon have had them over winters and they, as long as the group is made the right way, uh, they'll survive and they'll be great. Uh, Hartford could participate in the next annual tour of the group, that's the brown T-shirt that you're seeing, uh, Stephanie, uh, we could discuss it more with you. But essentially what that is, is, uh, people from the community, uh, surrounding community neighbors, uh, they actually come and discuss best practices on how to care for your chickens, like how to actually winterize them, how to get them ready for the spring, kind of make look for any sort of ailments. And it's, uh, not only provide the opportunity when that's happening, but also giving the access to a community that you can reach out to later on and not feel intimidated to actually ask dumb questions, which I'm prone to do. Um, so, yeah, and this connection to our ad community as well, uh, our, my kids, they don't, they're one generation removed from farmers and they don't have to deal with that kind of stuff. Uh, and I think that's kinda sad, because I grew up on my grandma's farm and I was able to connect with that community that way. And I just want to be able to pass on that kind of tradition that we had and we have still appreciation for what it takes to actually care for animals, care for a garden, and what our extended farming community actually does for us and for the world. And I feel with that kind of thing, instead of them being on their iPads all day, they can actually have something to connect that way a little better. So, uh, so I think that this will give another inclusive thing for our community to participate and build bonds with each other and have an additional wonderful thing that makes Hartford our home. And before we get to questions, I will say that I do have two subject matter experts here that have dealt with the writing of the Sioux Falls ordinance and ensuring that, uh, things are going well with it. That's, uh, Tony Hellen. And then, uh, Stephanie is from Fruit of the Group and, uh, she knows all about these things and takes care of chickens and and ready to take questions for me, he's a health and our two experts. And don't ask these kids any questions. They're gonna act like they're shy until they know you.
Alright, anybody got any questions?
So, and I know I read somewhere where there's a, and I don't see it here, but there's a certain amount of feet that has to be cut from the neighbor's property. And, and then twenty feet, I know it was from streams and yada, yada, yada. I don't remember what that was, but can you maybe with me that, those parameters real quick?
Right, so, uh, let me get through that part of the ordinance, so I'm looking specifically. The, the idea is, is that we don't wanna encroach on our neighbors, uh, to a point that it's unreasonable. So, less than ten feet from the door, window of any dwelling, block by place, so that's, uh, we don't want people leaning them up against their houses or even against like their neighbor's houses or anything like that. Then manure storage should be twenty feet away from stream, tributaries, ditches, or stormwater, so if people have like a side yard or something like that and, uh, they wanna put their chicken coop close to where the storm drainage area is, we wanna prevent that. So that, uh, all these things contribute to a nuisance of having these chickens around, so we don't, we wanna prevent that at all costs. And, so as far as away from property lines, I believe I have ten feet in here.
Yeah, I think I see that.
Okay, yep. So, ten feet, we think that's reasonable, and the, the reason for that is if, uh, your neighbor built the fence that you two share, we don't want somebody to start nailing their chicken coop to it or anything else like that. We just kinda wanna respect our neighbors' boundaries. And with this ordinance, we wanna ensure that we don't get into a negative dispute with our neighbors just because somebody wants to kind of go outside the lines a little bit.
I would assume the next step would be if we, if we're going, if we're going to discuss this, it would have to be put on a future, future agenda. We're not gonna act on it tonight since this is just in the visitor section. We appreciate all the information, but we're not going to, uh, act on it this evening. We have to go on a future, future agenda. I also understand that in Hartford, Kelly Point, RT, and once the other, there's three subdivisions that have covenants that do, don't allow it.
It's most all the, the newer ones, Kelly Point, uh, Western, Turtle Creek Highlands, Western Meadows, um, South Main doesn't even allow them.
Yeah.
Um, RT, so it's mostly the newer, so this one applied to them anyway, because their covenants don't allow it basically.
Right.
So there's certain, if you do enact an ordinance, there's certain parts of town that will affect and certain ones that it won't affect.
Anybody got any action or other questions? No, we appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you for all the information. And, uh, we'll see what happens.
I'll be looking forward to the next meeting.
Alright.
Hopefully I can come, but we'll be, right, uh, if, uh, everyone doesn't mind, you've got little guys and you've got busy people, is it okay if we?
Oh, absolutely.
That's all right.
Absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
You bet.
Me, Ben.
Thanks for coming with you guys. Thank you.
See this photo, they're favorite, one of us.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, we have our seven oh five public hearing, first reading, uh, ordinance seven eleven. Theresa, you got a little background on this?
Yeah, so, but every five years, um, we have the Planning and Zoning Board, kind of go through our zoning regulations, make sure, you know, they're, they're still, you know, up to date, they're still doing what we want them to do, see if any possible changes need to be made and issues that have arisen. So, anyway, we have CCOG, do, um, quantify our ordinances all into one ordinance, and then the board reviewed it, and then we discussed possible changes, if anything. And what's in your packet are suggested changes from the Planning and Planning and Zoning Board. Um, we actually have talked about, three or four meetings, kind of discussed this thoroughly, but, um, for the most part, there are four changes. Um, pretty minor, all of them, except maybe the home occupation. But the first change suggested is on accessory buildings and uses. And, um, it's changing, um, section twelve point oh three, number one. Basically, it's saying where accessory buildings can be placed, and basically, it's not changing where they can be placed. It's just clarifying the wording so it's understood better by the public. Basically, we don't allow accessory buildings in front yards. They can be in side yards, but not within the seven-foot setback area. And they can be in rear yards as long as they meet either, depending how big they are, the five-foot or the ten-foot setback. Before this change, and, and wait, that's exactly what we say here, before we talk about the setback, setback area as required yard. And people are going, what's required yard? And me too, when I first read it, I was like, what's your required yard? Got clarification on the CCOG, so this just clarifies it a little bit better where exactly they can be placed. It doesn't change where they can be placed, it just clarifies it better. The second one changed is suggested for off-street parking. Nothing was changed in that except for adding the last line that's saying driveway aisles do not count towards required parking spaces. So, every zoning district has required parking, whether you, you know, you're residential, you gotta have so many spaces. Whether you're a business, depending what type of business, you have to have so many spaces. Can, just result of questions, um, and it's mostly usually with commercial contractors and, hey, can we count our driveway as our parking space? Well, driveway aisles are supposed to be open and kept free of parking, so, you know, we, I say no, we don't allow that, but this just clarifies it. I can point to this and say, no, you can't count driveways as your parking spaces. You have to have actual parking spaces. So, once again, just a clarification. Home occupation, this was changed just a little bit. Basically, um, what's considered a home occupation, that is mostly stayed the same. But previously, we had required a conditional use permit for all home occupations. So, say you have just an office in your home, but your business is somewhere else, or you do tuckware out of your house, or, you know, stuff like that. You should come and get a conditional use permit from the city, more often than not, you know. We don't even know a lot of these home businesses that are in there. So, um, years back, it used to be if you had a minor home occupation, something like that, something that doesn't have crazy hours, doesn't have a lot of traffic, you know, doesn't have tons of employees, as long as you don't change the aesthetics, basically, of the neighborhood for having your business in there. You follow our regulations, you can have a minor home occupation. And then you don't need a conditional use permit, which requires coming to the board, for a major home occupation. And then you'd only need a conditional use permit, which requires coming to the board, for a major home occupation. And that major home occupation, basically, if you don't, can't follow these rules, you got to come to the planning and zoning board and kind of go over your hours of operation, the number of vehicles you get to park outside, and they can look at all that. So, we kind of switched it back to that. Instead of everything requiring a conditional use permit, minor ones, as long as you follow our regulations, allowed. Major ones, you still got to get the conditional use permit. So, that's probably the biggest change on there for it. And then the last section that we're changing is basically definitions. And it's, we added a definition for reversed frontage lot. We talked about in our regulations, but we never had a definition in there, so it's just adding that to clarify it once again. And then, we talked some on temporary signage. Basically, what we have currently in there talks about temporary sign can be placed for a certain period of time, but we never defined what that period of time was. So, not that we have a lot of issues with temporary signs, but if we were to have an issue, somebody put out 20 signs in their yard and kept them there, you know, for nine months, since we don't define what that time period is, we really can't address it. So, basically, we added verbiage under temporary signs. Keep the same, you know, 32 square feet, but we defined, it can only be up there for 120 days, unless you get a special permit basically from the city, the zoning administrator. That way, because we did talk about with the planning and zoning board, what about real estate signs and, you know, properties that don't sell? And what about the West Central Trojan signs that all the parents buy, put in their yard? Obviously, they can stay there, you know, for extended period of times. It just kind of puts that time a little bit on there in case we would happen to have a problem with it. So, those are the recommended changes from the planning and zoning board. Instead of, we talked about this for a few meetings here now and they voted to recommend approval of this.
All right. Any motions or actions?
Motion to approve ordinance 711 as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a question. About every five years, that CCOG, hopefully it's 180 degrees.
Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. Yeah.
They do occasionally change that.
They do occasionally come over and change that, yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Not, we'll vote. Brandon?
Yeah.
Brandon?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Giel?
Yes.
And I mean yes. All right, we'll move down to second reading of ordinance 709. This is the rezone that no action was taken on the first reading.
Motion to deny second reading ordinance 709.
Clear. Second. All right, any discussion? So denial is denied.
Denial stops it, yeah, it doesn't get resolved.
Denial is a resoning. All right, any other discussion on this? Not, we'll vote. Giel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yeah.
And I mean yes. All right. Next is resolution 2021-6, amend the special assessment policy for streets. Teresa, you got any little update on this one?
So, we looked at this at our last meeting and basically, these are just amendments to our general assessment policy. What's highlighted in yellow, it's the same thing that was, we looked at last meeting. I haven't changed anything. At that time, we decided to, we're going to put for, we're going to find basically between existing streets and new streets and then we're going to put in there a cap of $200 for existing streets. Any new streets, the assessment would be that cost of whatever it'd be. And the only other change basically was to put a note at the end of it that this will be reviewed yearly. To figure out what's out of it. So, same thing we looked at last meeting, haven't changed anything from that time.
Motion to approve resolution 2021-6 as presented.
Clear. Any discussion on this one? Not, we'll vote. Brandon?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Giel?
Yes.
And I mean yes. Next one is 2021-7, this is to amend the discretionary formula ordinance.
This one, basically, this is ordinance we've already enacted. Basically, for any new construction, gives a tax break on the assessments. We've had this in place for many years. Basically, it states that if you have new commercial buildings, first year, you're assessed at 0%, the second at 25%. That's basically our tax break that we get, give to new businesses coming into the city. The formula has not changed it, also since we passed it. What has changed is that the state has changed their codified law number. So, where we reference South Dakota codified law 10.6 and 137, it used to be 10.635.2. So, in order to stay consistent and reference the correct law number, we had to change all those codified law numbers in it. So, like I said, what we give this to, what our formula is, nothing has changed. We just have to reference the correct codified law number since Peter Chase changed them.
Any action by the council on this?
Motion to approve resolution 2021-7 as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Not, we'll vote. Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Giel?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yep.
And I mean yes. All right, next up is the application for a special event for Dakota Resources. They're going to have their 25th anniversary at Buffalo Ridge Brewing on the 24th of September. And they're asking for open container under the sewer, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And to close first avenue, from main to the alley to the east.
Correct, yeah. Kelly just said that she couldn't stay for the full meeting, but it's pretty straightforward. September 24th from 12:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., they want to hold this event at the brewery for Dakota Resources. Just asking for First Street, which is the street south of there, to be closed from main to the alley and then allow the use of alcohol on the sidewalks, around the brewery, and in that closure part. So, all cells will be in the brewery beyond their property.
Motion to approve special event for, for Dakota Resources at the VRV ads brewery.
Second. Any further discussion?
Is there, just bringing a thought here, they're going to use that area on the street. Is there anything that says they can't do there? They put up a big circus tent, you know, a big white tent on the street. This is just a general future question. I mean, is that something we need to address? Like what they can and can't do with the street other than block it off?
They should ask for it in their special event application if they want to do something like that. Because here, they are asking for basically just barricades and the use of alcohol. If they want, just like the damn brewery comes in, you know, if they want to put a tent up somewhere, if they want to ask for something different, you know, they should include it on their permit and that, so you guys can be reviewing that and deciding yes or no. Just like when they came with the market and asked for the picnic tables, you know, they included that, they wanted the use of it. So, it all is approved, or if you decide not to approve, it's all on the permit, so.
That's a good point, Mark. And honestly, the $5 for this doesn't cover paperwork.
Honestly, you are correct. We've had that.
Let alone it doesn't cover the city coordinating the installation and removing the barricades.
Bringing out the barricades, taking back the barricades.
So.
Maybe that's a matter we need to discuss at a future meeting. We should look at those types of fee structure, if you will.
Yeah, we've had that discussion here in the office. We've kind of had it with all the organizations asking to waive it. It's like, you know, $5, maybe we should just collect it. You pay it if you want to have the event. Like I said, it doesn't even cover the paperwork or the time associated with it, yeah.
Straight across the board for everybody.
Yeah.
It costs you $20 for a golf cart permit. It should cost you $20 per habit.
Special event permit. Yep, that makes sense.
That's something that we put on a future agenda to look at.
Yep, I think we should do that. Good point. Anything else on this? Wait a motion of a second already, correct? Nothing else, we'll vote. Brandon?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Giel?
Yes.
And I mean yes. All right, the next one's also a application for a block party on South Main. Oh, she is. Hey!
Hi. All we're asking for is to lock off room.
Okay.
We've done for three, four years now?
Yeah.
Different date, over here.
Motion to approve the application for block party in South Main.
Clear. Any further discussion?
So what's this, how does that work for these barricades? You guys drop them off down there and then you guys put them up, right?
Yeah, we put them up and pick them up.
Picks them up on Monday or whenever, yeah.
This is not one of those $5 deals.
It matters. It was a lot, $5.
Tell the neighbors it's going up next year.
Tell them, tell them to be prepared. Whoever's in charge next year, be prepared.
That's all, that's all. It's not like an organization. We're not selling beer.
You guys are all loaded down there on that end of the street, I hear. All right, any other discussion on this? Not, we'll vote. Giel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yeah.
And I mean yes. Thank you. Have fun.
Very well. Yeah, we wish you'd come and join us.
Yeah, I threatened to come before they have it, so. The deputy is not here, but we got his report, I think, printed and it was in our.
Yeah, he did have, he had a few days off last week, so he didn't have his report by Friday, but he sent it over this morning. He was working today and he may, must have got a call or something, I'd say, because he was assuming coming here, so.
There was somebody heading toward COVID today.
Okay, so he must have got a call, so.
The only thing I mentioned to Teresa when I looked through this is we had quite a few car break-ins and that's that larceny number that went from, went up to 15. I'm assuming that that's.
That's what I said, I'm assuming, you know, a lot of.
We were hoping he was going to be here.
We go, a couple weeks ago, we had a night of kind of a rash of break-ins. So, that's what I kind of assumed as a, we were going to ask Amy for sure, but.
Yeah.
Again, sure saw this landline, that's big number two, almost on a date. 24th. Especially if they're calling, 911.
Yeah, and they're calling, yeah.
And not really.
Or the non-emergency.
Or the non-emergency number, yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, that could be the, the non-emergency number as well with questions or concerns or whatnot.
Tracks all of that.
Yeah, because it may not necessarily be an emergency.
Got you, got you. Okay, okay.
If you find any difference on that, just shoot us a message.
Yep, I'll let Amy know about it and I'll put it in email about it.
All right, we'll move on to Amy Farr's report.
Information's in the pack and I don't have a lot to update, just continuing to get phone calls about different businesses that are interested in the Hartford area and then working on several chamber events coming up. Well, we have the Hartford block party coming up as well as the golf, and then on August 4th.
$20.
Better change that.
I was already grandfathered in by that one, thank you.
That'd be the first one to charge the.
Get down, get down.
It's retro, so yeah, thanks. Talk for it.
Looking for corporate sponsorship there.
Yes. Like at least two to three more.
Thanks, Nick, I'm already cold. Thanks, Nick.
I wouldn't be pulling your leg.
All right, any questions for Amy?
Keysight meets. What's, do they have an estimated opening on that?
They said late July, maybe early August.
That's just one user, just one tenant in there, not two.
All the luxury users. What was that block party, is that a Wednesday?
Yes, July 21st, about two and a half weeks off.
That's going to be downtown?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
Helping out the downtown businesses, absolutely.
Nice of y'all to celebrate.
You're welcome. We got it, we planned the date so we could do a special singing. So, hope you can make it.
All right, anything else for Amy? If not, let's move on to our city engineer.
Not a mark, I've changed from the last meeting, actually been replied. So, the design standards, we're actually going over that and presenting that to PNZ on the 27th. The CIPN updates, we will actually be meeting tomorrow morning in discussion, discussing next year's budget. Overall and project wise, not any major ones there on the wastewater feasibility study. We've really heard enough about that last week. Craig and Rachel are going to plan to the site today, I haven't determined a time, but the SBR system is the one that they're going to review. And then we will be planning to actually put together the final report. So, that will be, we actually have that final report heading in your direction. On the community development plan and the downtown plan, our next big item is targeting the week of July 19th for this set of user group meetings. From the dump tank, the information I received back on that, actually the number one item of voting for folks was actually downtown. Where they would invest their dollars, so. I was a little interested to see that and not amenities, it's almost always amenities. But I thought that was a really good indication of the focus, so.
That's good.
Any question for me?
I've become the point person for Lance Peterson. Apparently, he's made the corrections.
Oh, nice. We will take a look at that.
Checking them out, I guess.
Yeah.
Long shoulders.
Anyone else?
Anything else for David? All right, Mr. Craig?
Just a couple of updates on my report. Streetlights downtown here, I did contact Ryan Meyer Electric. He's sending me over a cost estimate, we think it's going to take, lay those down. So then we'll start coordinating things with Sioux Valley to get those switched out. Trees, Mike has them all done right now for the EAV, they've been treated for the year. The next two years from now, ones that get treated again. And then, one other thing, just the sports complex, we did get the shade canopies up. They survived the winds yesterday. They are, my directions on them, they won't get left standing year round. It's just you roll the tarps. They are filled with water, so we will be drained that out and put sand in them. So, we still move them, but they'll be heavy enough to keep from moving or not freezing very the tanks, so.
There are nice tanks in there.
Will they handle the freezing if I just leave them with water?
You can. I'm sure a lot of guys do freeze them.
That's all I really have in my report for updates. Somebody has, I guess you want me to say something?
Yes.
So, with the lagoons out there, I really don't know if it's from just the extreme heat and dry conditions, low flows, if that's what's causing them to have the odor. Doors are working properly out there. We did have them go down last night in the weather from lightning strike. But anyways, they're working fine. We did get some enzymes to add to them, that usually does help. They got put in two weeks ago or else, something like that.
Did you find anything out about anybody that possibly had done some other...
I haven't had a chance to even talk to them. I'd be the only ones that could be something, it'd be the hotel, I haven't had a chance to get up there and talk to them, yeah. I'll make that on my list to hopefully up there in the morning, so...
It's just, I mean, if my memory serves me right, this has actually been the worst since we've lived here six years. I've not noticed it to this extent for this extent of time. Before.
Yeah, and it might be such a thing that there's, everything's just staying low, it's fine going up, the air atmosphere.
I did notice there was a fair amount of inversion on the fourth, and I think it was another day I was gonna spray, but I was like, eh, can't do it, so...
Yeah, as far as like the hotel, usually the bar screen, if it, if when you go in there, you can usually smell if something's upset, you know, if something's not ready over there, so... That's before you can get something near, so... We'll keep trying to hopefully get something figured out.
We're gonna do that for a few more years.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question on the streetlights. So... Aren't they Sioux Valley-owned streetlights?
These ones here, they won't claim, that one's downtown. They will put new ones in, but they said that they're technically ours, they have been maintaining them, but they're our...
Okay.
City owns and holds.
All right.
So that's why they want us to have them taken down.
Sure.
So we'll coordinate, it'll be probably three to four days that we might not have any lights downtown except for the sole ones, so...
That'd be a nice test.
Yeah, so we'll, once they get them shut down, we start, soon as Myers starts landing down, we'll start jackhammering the concrete all right behind them, and then Sioux Valley will be coming there right behind us, so we'll try to coordinate, so we can take them down and set something up right away and just keep moving through it, so...
You could do it a lot cheaper by hiring a design company. You're gonna need a torch to take those down anyway.
Yeah.
You don't have to be fancy with them.
No.
You know, hire A Signs for, what, four hundred bucks? At the city of the town.
I told them to send me a price first, so I went to get that from them, get a quote, and I might be, maybe get somebody with extended boom that can reach up with something to, dough chain on them. I don't know, it's...
Never sold one extended boom, but I have with A Signs.
You wanna tell me a quote?
I can, sure, yeah, I mean, I think we can do it pretty cheap.
Yeah, I don't know if technically they can use it.
No, no, it's fine, that's why I keep saying, you should use A Signs.
I'll do some, I'll check the scores, like I said, I'm sure we're at the torch all the way.
Or another one at the sign companies, really, I mean, anyone, they'll, they'll do a, we'll set poles for us all the time.
Let's kind of hopefully do a couple of late in the street last night.
I know, right? If I could run into one of my dudes.
And you mentioned about the lift stations, about... We had two of them go down last night, so that powered, but, um, it'll be nice to eliminate a few of them in the futures. We didn't have any swing backup, so I had that, we spent about an hour, hour and a half trying to get things up and keep things moving, so... Good shape, um, but it'll definitely be nice to eliminate a couple of them during the future.
Well, they were busy at the leaf dump this afternoon. Oh. I went down to dump off one trash can full, and there was...
And our policy is after, like tomorrow, we'll order them, if they've got, lay it all over, and we'll pick them up next couple of days, and then, um, after that, they're on the road, so...
Yeah.
Did you open it up all day or...?
No, we just left it open just normal hours.
We talked about it, but then nobody's there to monitor it, and are you opening up for county? We just wanted to stay consistent.
I was just curious. We did anything different?
I would say I did see our monitor go up to the backup that pulled in after me, after me, and asked a doctor, so...
The expectation is that they're open till eight, or whatever the posted time is.
Right.
If they close two minutes early...
Should be, and they should be.
Yeah.
I've heard about it, we've heard about it. I heard about that.
Don't open five minutes late either.
We did have a monitor last year, I was five minutes late, and geez, I had lined, and they were stolen. But that's all we got, and somebody else, is anything else?
All right, anything else for Craig? Keep an eye on them, we'll do it, so let's keep that. All right, Karen?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add. Um, Park Rec started this morning, they didn't get ready about, I think it went good.
Had floor afterwards, they have thirty participants per age group, so that's a nice manageable group, so everything's doing well this morning, so yeah.
Still some golf cart permit, that sounds good. Still some pet licenses?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll have to run the numbers here again now that June's over, and see how we did. They're still coming in.
About a half million dollars more in the general fund. Governor of War chest, that's good. That's good. All right, any questions for Karen? Not? Teresa, you got anything to add?
Um, just find out a couple of things on our report. Grants, uh, no real updates there except for on the dog parks, um, you know, the Girl Scout troop had applied for an A R P grant, and that was denied. Um, I think they said they had like thirty-seven hundred requests applications, so there's... There's a lot of people looking for grants and not that much money out there, it's kind of the norm all across the board. Um, but we still have our application in for the G F M P, and we should hear something about that, even this, I think this one is, we've done that, you should know by next year, um, early next year. Um, updates, just, um, with Stockwell, so just what they're working on, um, as you know, they took us where out there to correct the issue with the road by the Calvert, so that should be taken care of. Um, I did see correspondence from FEMA asking for additional information again, so it was all kind of back and forth on the low bar with FEMA, we're still doing that. Um, and then the other thing, uh, they are adding, you know, at our previous meeting or last month, we had... Made a motion for them to go ahead and add water to Twelve Street and the extra sewer option maps landing, so they'll incorporate that in the plans, I think it'll probably take a couple months to get that. We should be ready for a fall bid if we want to, which probably sounds like a good timeline to bid for people maybe looking into next year, so...
Fall like October or fall like late August?
I think October, November probably is, is fall looking.
As dry as it is, I think, uh, there's gonna be dirt contractors that'll be working. I would think so.
Prices are, uh, coming up too, so...
Yeah, they are, yeah. Prices on that stuff coming.
So I think as soon as they get the plans updated, we should look at feeding that, yeah. So get, get on the radars for, so...
As far as the sports complex, did, what is Stockwell looking at? Adding stubbing in or running all the way in?
Plans were running in, but it's stuck out to where the future concessions are.
Yeah, so he's running...
Running all the way in? Okay.
That would be tore up one time, and that way, that can settle off, get some going in, so if concession stands on us...
It's there.
Yeah, so at some point, when we do a building, yeah, we'll be there.
Okay, so put it into the north or south of the sidewalk that went in last year, is that?
What's that?
They put it into the north or to the south of that sidewalk? That went in last year.
So it's gonna fall where the future road's gonna go?
Yeah.
And then it'll split the, uh, the existing field and the good field.
Coming from the north.
Coming in from the north, yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah.
There is that's about.
All right.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Teresa?
Just a comment, and if there's a group of pet lovers in this community, it's dogs. So we got a half million dollars more in our general fund this year than we did last year at this time. We, we're not gonna do anything with the dog park until twenty-twenty-two at this pace, right? We're waiting on a grant.
Right.
It's potentially, I mean, it was substantial, you gave us the number. Was it fifty? Was it the whole thing or was it a half, about twenty?
Of the grant?
What was the, what do you expect the grant to potentially be? How do I appease those dog owners again when they ask for the dog park, and I say, well...
You never know if you're gonna get what you requested, or if you're gonna get part of it, I mean... I hope we get as much as we can, but I don't...
You start...
Right, and, and I'm just saying, sometimes there's an R O I. And you take it, you know, you wait for it, or you take it now, you know?
The thing is with the grant though, so if you get something, no matter what that amount may be, usually you can't start anywhere until, you know, you get that awarded, so... I think, see what you get for the grant, and then, even if it isn't the full amount we asked for, then, you know, you know we have to come up with...
It's hard to look at the constituents and say, we waited for your hand, and we didn't get anything. And we're, we're three years talking about a dog park.
Tell them we started the shade trees.
And Invision has talked about helping out with that as well, so...
Right, true, we've talked about that.
That's another part of that, I think if this council... Fixed it in their head to do the dog park, the vision money and some city money, we could just move it on.
Make it possible without the grant.
And not, not bury your feet on the grant, but just want to plant that seed.
You remember that estimate, Craig?
What is that? That is like fifty-two grand is what it was, you were the estimate, so...
That was the fans and...
That was everything.
Electric, water, everything, yeah.
Yeah, not electricity.
Not electricity.
Not electricity.
Just seasonal water.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. You wouldn't need electric out there right away if...
There's streetlights there, so...
Right, so what do you think? Should we put that on the agenda for next meeting and get that, if we're gonna have that discussion and make the decision?
That's the only way it's gonna happen, I suppose.
I'd say let's get that on for the next meeting. Let's at least have the discussion.
Can we have a commitment for Invision, Matt? We could discuss it at our meeting tomorrow. That's why you get invited.
I sent her an email saying that it was canceled due to the holiday and the light agenda. Sorry.
It's not that, it's working. Honestly.
No many of them. No home lights.
All right, anything else for Teresa?
Question, so if we do that though, is there anything that kind of shoots us, excuse me, in the foot for the grant if we're moving, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
If we move forward if anything.
Lose the chance, we lose the grant.
The chance for the grant.
But like Travis said, what's our, what's our R O I, R O I, let's keep our, because there are, you're right, there's a bazillion dogs in this town. Some of them with licenses, no?
A lot of them with licenses, no?
This is a block, I think it's a way to capture a lot more licenses. And you do, they need your dog license. It's gonna be posted right there on the dog park.
Just 'cause it's posted doesn't mean it'll happen.
I think Karen's just like the setup. I think, don't you think?
What?
I think Karen just said she would set down there.
It's not in my job. Duty does it, so... You know that this is going down, it would get really lengthy, but what if, because the Girl Scouts are, you know, very engaged in this and passionate about it, I know there would have to be an adult there, but what if there were, was a person randomly there, because I don't think we could make it a full-time situation, that did check for dog licenses and rabies?
They could have the city staff.
Huh?
Pretty sure, went down for the city staff.
I think for insurance-wise, they won't let us have.
Sure.
You guys have to issue them, correct?
Well, not...
Kind of like issue them, but...
Even just somebody checking.
Even hire somebody part-time, like you said, sitting there, and...
Yeah, I just, I, I guess I feel like it would be a good monitoring system, I'm just not sure how to go about it and how that could all work together, I'm just throwing thoughts out there.
This could be something, you know, code enforcer could stop periodically on days, and who's out there, hey, can I see your license? You know, it's, it's in the rules, which we'll post, that they have to be licensed, but, yeah, they can come by there and randomly check the licensing and whatnot, so, yeah. And then you, the ones being honest or being honest, and the ones, no, the ones that aren't, yeah, they maybe have a chance to catch them, so...
All right.
We get to continue.
Okey-dokey. Thanks, Teresa, we'll keep moving on. Old business, now we're gonna talk a little bit about logistics of the creation of Park and Rec Board, review possible members. The last meeting, the mayor, I think, instructed us to come with a couple possible member names. If I remember right?
Yep, he kind of wanted the council to throw some names up for him to consider, because, um, um, for the ordinance, he will be appointing them, and then you guys will vote, you know, the council for approval or not, but at least if he has some names, he can go talk with them and discuss, you know, the possibility of sitting on the board, so... Michael, listen, if you guys have any names.
Yep, I do, I got a couple. Uh, Ellie Crittenen, down on, uh... Pressman Circle, I think, is their address down there. Matt Evans up on, uh, Sage Horn. I agree with Mr. Winter, I think, uh, a member or somebody from the Legion would probably, at least should be on there for consideration.
I know Mark Monahan threw out Troy's arse and things before, and I've kind of been emailing a little bit back and forth and giving him a heads up, maybe, and he doesn't have any issues with that.
Right.
Gail Block, girl's looked at it.
That's our pickleball representative.
There you go, that's her.
Kind of the pickleball representative. Anybody else got any, uh... Names to add? If not, we need to keep adding to that list, because we need to have a... Yeah, I, I added that in, yeah. It'd be nice to have a pool of ten or twelve that we could at least discuss, I would say would be the best.
B J, you probably can't speak for him, but, you know, Josh Mulder, uh, was coming to some meetings, is he still showing some interest in what you guys do? I mean, that's somebody you could reach out to, you think?
Yeah, yeah, I think Josh would be a good candidate, I mean, I just like the idea of just getting more people involved.
And I did talk to Josh, he stopped by in my driveway and visited a little bit with him, and kind of planted the seed of the board, and he did express... Interest or, oh, consideration at least.
Was that nine? I had a great talk with Seth. A little preachy?
Keep preaching.
I did have a nice visit with Matt Evans, so I, I think he's, he's got some interest in sets, he's the kind of a soccer tie, that doesn't hurt us any. He's done a lot of work on that committee, so...
Well, if we can give these names to the mayor for a start, and see if we can get anybody committed, and then we can move on, and there'll be more seats to fill, so, okay?
That's good, and the other point you had on there was the transfer of the existing funds, I guess that's something that we will talk about when we get ready to create this.
Right, so just start thinking about, I, I put in your package, so currently, we have set aside, and, and it's all in the general fund, the money is, but basically, we are keeping track of money that, like I said, has been allocated previously by the board. The bike and rec trial committee has about forty-five thousand sitting there, and then the sports complex committee has a little over two hundred thousand sitting there as well. Now, like I said, it's all part of the general fund, it doesn't get dispersed unless council agrees to it, but as we talked at our previous meeting, with creation of the Park and Rec Board, we shouldn't be allocating funds to individual entities anymore, they should go to the Park and Rec Board account. Obviously, they can't spend it without your guys' approval, but, um, at some point, we'll wanna put this under the Park and Rec Board account, or a portion of this, or however you guys wanna do it, so I'll start thinking about that, so we can keep moving forward with those discussions.
That's something we can handle it by the time?
Yep, exactly, yeah. So that, that's kind of what I thought, because they definitely want to set up budget for twenty-twenty-two to just re-collect a Park and Rec Board account, and that's all, yeah, so...
This might, I hope this doesn't throw a muck into... Have we, David ever said to you guys to take a look at those sports and the...
We talked about it, but then we were waiting for the community feedback.
I said, it's something to lay out, and then one time you kind of asked them to come up with cost estimates, and like I said, I think you guys are just waiting on...
You guys really haven't done a deep dive.
We most certainly can.
Huh?
We most certainly can, and we evaluate the plan that is today and...
Yeah, but... Because I would think that if, if there's gonna be discussion about the baseball field, we're gonna really have to take a look at how that's gonna... I would assume how that's gonna fit in, because that's a different size than what we got out there right now. So... And you know, the other thing I thought you didn't, you didn't mention this in your talk is, do they play most of their games at night? Do you need lights? We have no lights out there. I was gonna ask you that and then I know you.
That might be true, uh, but right now, you know, if it's during the summertime, keep in mind how light it is.
Right, yeah.
Hopefully we won't run and probably have one game where they had to call it off because they insect.
And one in Minnesota.
Yeah.
That was the first, you guys are too good at computer control for that, right?
Yeah. Anyway, that's just another thought, you know, as this deal, because when we've talked about this before, putting lights out there is a.
Half a million dollars.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big expense, big expense, that's a huge expense. So, anyway, that's.
Question with uh, I'm assuming that the board's not going to be taking care of the, like, the daily stuff, like uh, benches, resurfacing or sandblasting them and painting those, I mean, is this something I need to figure into my budget next year for for parks and something like that, is to do some of the smaller upkeeps where now we're taking it out of their funds? Because like we um, did some of the soccer, just looking at some of the stuff we spent this year, we have a couple thousand just on the soccer goals getting those blasted repainted and we've done some benches and different things like that, I mean, so that group's not gonna really look at the small picture or leave that maintenance up just the way it normally goes? And I'm gonna have to make sure we figure budget-wise to.
Wonder the Park and Rec, oh, we can have a maintenance line item.
Yeah, so just to keep that in mind, so, yeah.
Yep, I would say yes, yeah, to to that point, um, let's see, there was some.
The budget's coming up, so.
Looking at your meeting minutes, BJ, there was um, you can put handicap parking signs up and and to me, I think, man, that's a city job, that should really fall under the city's responsibility to buy those signs, put those up. So I don't know, those requests should.
Uh, they weren't actually handicap parking signs, they were handicap city signs.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so there's two designated spaces next to each dugout uh, on the interior portions of the field that are paved.
Yeah.
Uh, so we, and of course, they're the closest to the dugout, so since there wasn't any shade, those are the first spots to fill in with uh, you know, lawn chairs. When the people who need those areas show up, they're usually later to the game and then they don't have accessibility to the shade, nor do they the handicap signs.
Okay.
We fixed the shade issue, so that shouldn't be as much of a problem, uh, and now we'll put the signs on the fence to indicate that they're for handicap accessibility only.
Did you guys get the signs yet?
I don't know if they got them or not, I don't know.
So I was talking to Tony, um, I mentioned him, that putting those signs up are gonna block views. So people are gonna have, sit there and look at a sign.
I think they're gonna put them down below.
Otherwise, I suggest to just paint in our handicap, our street marker on the paths, two shots.
Sure, and I don't know if they were ordered, yes.
So I know if you ordered or not, but I I told them we'd get up with our spencer and paint them on that, probably just in case, but yeah, otherwise it's gonna have to be no more, so.
Yep, it it is absolutely needed, I've been up there witnessing firsthand, had to ask people to move, it's just an uncomfortable situation for everybody involved, so if it was just marked clearly, um, you know, they'd be, now that we have the sidewalks in, they use a ton, so it was a huge step forward for the accessibility I was talking.
Since we're, since we're talking sports and rec, can you, can you tell me why, what, twenty-six hundred fifteen dollars roughly for taxes paid to the IRS, I thought, aren't you guys a five oh one C three?
I would assume that was probably for the chase the ace that we did last year.
For the chase, okay, that makes sense.
Sure.
It wasn't clearly spelled out what that was for, so my wheels were.
Yeah, in our last uh, complex committee meeting, we had sixteen people show up, so there's a a large expressed interest in getting those fields showed. So I know that when you guys came, it might have been six, our numbers have greatly increased.
That's good. All right, anything else on Park and Rec? If not, we're gonna move on to new business, anything else? All right, under good business, we got a couple items, review the bonus for pay for the pool personnel.
Yeah, I um, put this on the agenda, actually, um, me and Amy Seabird, the pool manager, have been discussing this for a couple of years. And ever since I've been employed with the city, um, basically the last two weeks, um, of when the pool's been open, we have given a fifty cent bonus per hour to those employees. I think it's started off as an incentive to get them to work the full season, stay, you're here for the season, you know, you'll get a bonus for the last two weeks you work and, you know, that's an incentive to stay versus people quitting midstream or whatnot, so, um, which is great, but um, we don't really think that maybe the fairest way to do it, um, because currently, um, this is examples, you know, last year we had a great worker from college, worked lots of hours, was willing to take shifts for other people, you know, came in, rarely asked for time off. They had to go back to college at three in August, didn't get any bonus because they didn't work the last two weeks, you know. Hence, you have kind of on the reverse end, you'll have your employees and it's always this way every year, good employees and social employees, but you'll have ones that ask for every weekend off, doesn't wanna work any nights, will work one or two shifts during the week, but then when you meet it at the last two weeks, they'll work more hours and then they'll get a bonus, more of a bonus than what should be, so. We just talked about it, it'd be great to reward our employees for the actual hours they work, so the ones that are willing to work, willing to fill the shifts, you know, which we always have trouble doing, they get more of a bonus than the ones that are always asking for time off, so. We'd like you guys to consider paying, um, in essence, it's kind of bumping their pay rate up some, which I think we need to look at next year anyway, because I think we're pretty low with our pay rate. But look at giving them a bonus for all of the hours work, so then it's rewarding those, like I said, that do put in the extra work, work the extra shifts and the time. Um, I just went off of kind of what we paid out last year, the hours, um, got a few scenarios, if we gave them, you know, ten cents bonus or fifteen cents or twenty-five cents, what it would cost the city and, so I'd like you guys to consider that, obviously, unless they've worked, once again, the whole season with us, they don't get it, you know. Going back to college isn't a disqualification, if you quit on the city, you know, midway through, we already had two quit already, so obviously they'd be ineligible for this, but if you work, you know, the time you're supposed to work with the city.
So if they give their two weeks notice and quit.
We don't give two week notice, right? And they usually don't give a two week notice, the pool personnel, they're just like, usually like, I'm done because I don't wanna work Friday, so.
I'm thinking of the. I'm thinking of the example you gave with the college student.
Yeah, that, they would be eligible, because obviously they gotta go back to school, it's not that they're quitting to, with the job, it's they gotta go back to school.
All right, just make sure.
And we've always allowed that for, we also pay for, um, you know, if they work the full season, we reimburse their certification costs with that. We do that for, like I said, college students that go back, obviously, they gotta quit when their school starts, so they're not quitting per se, they're working as long as they can. And so we allow reimbursement for that too, so.
Honorable discharge, so.
Honorable, there you go, perfect way to put it in there.
All right, any thoughts or motions or if we wanna discuss this further, what do you think?
I think the twenty-five cents an hour is valid, especially when you look at their hourly rates, like you said, those are, those are not excessively many, sure.
No, they they're, they don't get paid big wages to start with and, you know, bumping on the quarter, if they fulfill the whole season with us, I think worth it, and.
Really, if it's, if you pay the max and it's five hundred and some bucks over one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eleven, boys, that's.
Yeah.
I think we could probably swing that.
Craig's got a month left on the new draft.
He does, or something on the new draft, something on the new draft.
Still using them.
Wow. You wanna make that as a motion, Travis here?
Uh, motion to approve the bonus pay as presented at twenty-five cents an hour.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Uh, one, I'll make one comment, with Tracy and I were talking this afternoon about this, she knows she's gonna have to start looking at increasing the wages there, it's gonna, just one of them deals, we're gonna have to start paying more.
Yeah, we talked about that even with public works, you know, we just, we have very few applicants, you know, we were kind of struggling this year and I think to compete with McDonald's or something, maybe more than we do.
Just paying a seventeen-year-old for their public works helpers, so he's either fifteen or sixteen, let's told him, let's, you don't talk to my guys.
All right, any more, uh, any more discussion on this? Not will vote, O'Hara, Keel, yes, Randall?
Yes.
Renneman?
Yep.
And I'm yes. All right, last item on new business is discuss ARP, which is the American something.
Relief Plan, so basically it's more of COVID money, no kidding, for the government, and.
That to be confused, our AARP.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
So I don't, no decision needs to be made, I just want you guys to start thinking about this, um, we have been allocated about five hundred and seventy thousand as are sure that the Hartford should get for um, on this second round of funding here. I kind of put in your packet a list of things it could be used for, um, that's approved, obviously, anything COVID-related, um, whether it's PPE equi, PPE equipment, whether it's, um, if anybody got laid off during the time, which obviously we didn't have that, you know, payroll expenses, rebate programs, um, anything like that, if there's kind of any economic impacts, um, that also can be utilized, um, we are all considered essential workers here.
I like that part.
But we haven't, but but we really haven't, uh, nobody had lost wages or anything due to, because we, the two that had get tested, we paid them through it, so we really don't have a, I guess, to show that we had to pay out any money or lose wages there. The one that I think is uh, very interesting is they are allowing uh, infrastructure improvements, so water, sewer, we we got a project going up north that we didn't get any grants for whatsoever, so that may be a a good use for these funds or a portion of these funds or whatnot. Um, a couple other optional things, um, we've kind of talked about here in the office, um, we've talked about doing a text notification system to our citizens. That could be used, because it's a communication thing, so I think that can fall under these funds, we've talked about it in the past, I think it's something maybe we should explore a little bit more. Um, uh, we have, you know, still the barricades up there, our little um, string barricades here coming into City Hall. Um, we've talked about doing something more permanent, like maybe a glass door there, um, coming down the hall, um, we really like the barricades there. It just kind of controls who's wandering through the office, so, um, last year actually, we got some prices and we could look at that again if that's something you're interested in. Um, one thing I did wanna point out, Humboldt Ambulance did call me a couple weeks ago, they wanna get one of the power cots for the ambulance, they brought this up last year with COVID funds and that was an approved expense and supposedly Tim Evans said that it is approved expense this go around. Now, um, they would like, it's like forty thousand dollars, they would like us to pay twenty thousand and Humboldt to use their funds for twenty thousand. I have not got confirmation that it's approved one, I have an email into the state to see if that's allowed and if we can use our funding for another entity again, so, um, don't wanna act on that unless we get confirmation that we can do that, don't want us to script some money and then we don't get reimbursed, but I am checking into that, if that's something we wanna consider, so.
With the uh, text notification or email notification system, could we stretch it as far as to put digital billboards on the welcome to Hartford signs, the three of those?
You can check in with that.
Say mask mandate.
Communication with your public during emergencies, so.
During the public, yeah.
You could certainly put stuff on billboards.
It'll reach, but I like it.
I can check in that, so. That's right, so just want you guys to start thinking about this, see what it can be used for and if you have any other ideals, we will be discussing this in the future, so. I'll have it on a future agenda at some point.
All right, do we have anything under correspondence?
I was just gonna, a couple things I've seen tonight, the news or whatever, uh, Miniot Colony is putting a burmehan on it, but it does not affect the cities at this time, so that is in place, and then DOT got a pile of money too through, just wore it through recently, to do synergistic workload.
Are they gonna do the?
I think so.
Are they gonna turn off on thirty-eight on the Mankelson, are they gonna do that during the week?
They are, yeah, it's, what is it scheduled for, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty-three?
Twenty-two, is it? I think it's twenty-two, it's like twenty-three or twenty-four.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-three, it's twenty-two.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was supposed to be last year, but it's.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
That's what you're talking, we've got postponed now, because we just had that meeting here, three weeks ago, four weeks ago.
On that note, did some additional vegetation get cut down so we can?
Tony's been, Tony's pulled that.
Did that help?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we've been just going over.
We've been running a couple extra slots down the ditch, because it, boy, the necroasket stall, it's.
Hard to say, yeah.
That's a tough, that's a tough turn. All right, all right, nothing else, I know we gotta move into exec. Executive session on personnel, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks y'all for coming. Want to make sure I text Jeremy and say, yeah, or I'm done.
Take motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.